Well, I'll call it to order then. Call to order the ISD 361 roll call. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Here.
Tony Corpius?
Here.
Jennifer Windows?
Here.
Ted Saxon, here. Terry Murray? Roxanne Scopes at DEACH?
Here.
Kevin, over.
Here.
Ella Barr Jeffrey, student representative?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, before we get started, I want to talk about how important this meeting is and the fact that we need to make sure everybody who wants to be heard is heard. And so if somebody's a little long-winded and you want to talk when they're done, make sure you get the opportunity to talk. We can take as much time as we need. I might not be able to see you because of the way that the meeting's on our screens waving or whatever. So you can utilize the text box or just unmute your mic and start waving and then wait your turn after that too. Just make sure you get heard if you have something to say tonight. And it might not go perfectly. I'm happy that some of the people are here, so it can help a little bit with this smoother conversation. Okay, the other thing that we have is we're going to have approved the agenda, but we also have a public open forum. I don't know that we really had a sign up time. Anybody who's on the Zoom or in person that would like to talk, we ask usually that you limit it to five minutes, but we really want to hear what you have to say. So when we get to that after the approval of the agenda, please speak up and we'll make sure everybody gets an opportunity to present whatever they feel like presenting. All right, moving on to the approval of the agenda as presented, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Coming.
I got a motion by Mike and a second by Tony. Any further discussion? Anything, Kevin?
No, I'm good.
All right, well, I'll call it to a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpius?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Scopes at DEACH?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Can we get an all mute on the mics again and then unmute us here?
I can, I will mute everyone, but then we're going to have to unmute ourselves because I can't go through the list.
Yeah, no, I know that. Everybody else can unmute themselves again when the time comes with the people in this room. So anyways, I asked if anybody would like to talk for a public forum here. Would anybody like to talk for a public forum online? No? Okay, well, I do appreciate all the information that you guys have sent to us in the meantime since the last meeting. All right, then let's go on to our agenda here. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will say to approve that, but you're aimed towards the ceiling too, Ted.
Well, what the heck? I can't catch a break.
That's tough, Chris.
I'll second.
Okay.
Was that Ted?
Michelle.
Michelle, sorry.
Okay.
It's okay.
Motion by Terry, a second by Michelle. Does anybody want anything clarified?
Except for you're really echoing.
Yeah, I know, Rox. Like, stuff happens at this point. I don't even know what to tell you anymore. Somebody's mic's muted that wasn't supposed to be and I can only do so much with my superpowers.
Ted, is it possible that somebody in the meeting is also Zooming?
Probably, but I said it like three times already. Like, if you have a mic in here that's on, mute it. And you can listen if you have headphones on, but the feedback of the noise cancel is only going to be so good, so.
It's pretty good now.
All right.
I didn't, I didn't get a chance to hear that because you were muted when you said that before, so thank you for impeding it.
All right. You know, I watch the city council and the county and their stuff is not that good and we're way better than them and they don't catch nearly as much crap as I catch. That's all I'm going to say.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Yes, you may.
Clarification on the agenda?
Yep.
If, if there was, I don't know the procedure because I've never wanted something other than what's on the agenda. So if I, I just am looking for prestigious information and if, if I would like to suggest something other than what's being offered, can you just explain to me how that goes about on a particular item?
So are you talking about on the consent agenda or an action item?
Yes, I was just talking about on an action item, but out of clarification whenever you want to answer that.
Okay, because a consent agenda is if it's, if a consent agenda item turns into a discussion item, then it has to be polled and taken as an action item. So on those type of questions, you can only ask clarifying questions to get more information because that's the whole point. So we don't spend all, yeah, on all those consent agenda like paying bills things. Now, the action items, when we get to that point, with our current rules, any member can propose a action item. But it's, it's not like a first come, first served, who can talk the fastest type of thing. And if we're getting to the point where we get to the action items, I know that we have a certain resolution that's printed a certain way. But if somebody wants something different, you'll certainly have a chance to present that as a amendment or as, as an action item itself. So I know that like this is, this meeting is so important that I want to make sure that we don't dismiss any options just because we were quick to vote on the resolution that's presented. So if you have an idea for something, Jen, when we get to that point, if that's what you're talking about, then we'll make sure you have a chance to present that.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, so we had a motion by Terry and a second by Michael, Michael, I wrote, and a second by Michelle. All right. A little off my game tonight if you can't tell. All right, we're going to do a roll call vote then. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpius?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Scopes at DEACH?
Yes.
All right, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the next, zoom in when I want it to scroll. Moving on to the next action item, resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Tony and a second by Mike. Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. A touch pro, for the touch pro cart from the Nevinon family, $3,000. In memory of Larry Roach, $3,000. Argel Hendrickson, $1,500. Kathy Hendrickson, $1,500. Larry Ross Shadow Box Project from Dean Blaze, $200. Falls Elementary School from Wells Fargo Your Cause, $70. I have a motion by Tony and a second by Mike. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call it to a roll call vote. And I just want to say that all that donation is just so greatly appreciated. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpius?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray? Roxanne Scopes at DEACH?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Oh, come on. Let me hit the back button here. All right. Adopt resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the, the school district general election. Kevin, do I need to read out that whole?
I would just say as printed.
As printed. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll.
Second by Rox.
I got a motion by Michelle and a second by Rox. Any further discussion? Kevin, do you have anything?
Nope, this is just a formality of the election process.
All right, hearing none, well, is there any further discussion? Anybody else have any questions? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpius?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray? Roxanne Scopes at DEACH?
Yes.
All right, it carries unanimously. Moving on, adopt ISD 361 school reopening resolution, adoption of base learning model for 2020 to 2021 school year and other COVID-19 related matters.
I'll.
We got a motion by Michelle. Do I have a second by anybody?
Second.
I have a second by Mike. All right, we can talk as much as you would like. Kevin, would you like to start?
Yeah, if I could, Ted. First of all, the, sorry, someone's dinging. The, the resolution, which I can open there, is the MSBA resolution, which they recommend, you know, schools use to insert their information on what they're going to adopt as far as a plan. So I guess my thought is the first thing we need to have a conversation is we've put the information on the recommendation from administration of, and I'm going to, I wouldn't say abbreviate, but it is for the most part the hybrid model at the elementary for preschool through grade five. Okay, so that, again, when we say hybrid, keep in mind that means to do the social distancing six foot. And I'm going to say follow the CDC mental health guidelines. But I guess what we need to focus on, and it is running preschool through grade five with smaller class sizes. It would result, if we do this, in needing to add, I think it's three staff as far as teachers go. It's option C if you wanted to go back to the discussion from last week. At the high school level, it is splitting, doing a hybrid again, splitting into two groups, call it Group A and Group B, where Group A would meet two days a week in building. They would be online. The other two, meaning Monday, Tuesday, Group A is here while Group B attends virtually. Group B would be in Thursday, Friday, actually, in the building when Group A and B would attend in virtually during the class period with a Wednesday being a virtual day for everyone and allowing some additional cleaning as well as some additional planning and work time for the staff in that building. So that is what is in the resolution and it's obviously open to amendment, change, conversation. But that is, to me, the, the big purpose tonight is to figure out what we can agree on as far as a opening plan. From that point on, the resolution, if you read through the whole thing, has for us to, A, monitor the situation no matter what we started at. If we started at 100% distance learning, part of the resolution, that's what we're going to call our base, we will then monitor and at some point, if it is right, implement a hybrid or implement an all in person. So that, that's what the resolution allows is what we decide tonight does not mean we're stuck, you know, for the whole year. I mean, it's going to be a fluid situation in which we have to look at. And when I say we, it's administration along with the board, along with staff, planning team to look at, make a decision, and, you know, alter, if you will, based on how things are going. And there's just a variety of options or things that could happen. Our numbers could get better, our numbers could get worse. We could have, you know, an issue, and I'm just throwing it out, when the flu season comes along where maybe it's not COVID related, but maybe it's, we have a tough time, you know, having enough staff in the building because of, you know, we're going to be short as far as subs and stuff like that, that maybe we have to switch models based on things other than just COVID. But it's based on a package deal. We can switch back and forth. Again, the plan, as I've mentioned before and I've talked with quite a few people, you know, hopefully we can see forward enough, kind of like the governor's executive orders, that if something's going to change that we give due time, if we start out in a hybrid model and, you know, see that, A, our numbers are increasing, when I say numbers, the community, COVID numbers, hopefully we're looking forward and staying on top where we can say, you know what, say it's Wednesday. You know what, starting Monday, we have to switch plans. So families have, you know, a few days to prepare and we have some time to prepare. And it is even possible, when switching models, maybe we need a, a day for preparation. There are things we can do. Everything is not laid out, you know, every single detail, but that's the pieces we have to work on. We have to figure out what our starting model is and then fine tune, if you will, and finish all the details. That make sense?
Yeah, who wants, who wants to talk first?
I will.
All right, Rox, go ahead.
Okay, for me, I would like to change the resolution to move to go to 100% distance learning. And it's due to a myriad of things, but mostly due to the, how dangerous this situation is to the, the problem with subs, the problem with sickness, the problem with absences, the problem with, we talk about mental health for kids not being able to be there, but we're just changing mental health for kids who are there. For the problems with the teachers, there's going to be so much sickness that there's going to be a lot of either students or teachers gone. I don't know how we're going to do that with their sick leave. And so because of a, a large number, also, the big one is that kids are now, we're seeing on national news, our young kids are having a bigger viral load and that they're getting it more often now and can spread it. And so for all those reasons, I'd like to switch to one, the resolution to be 100% distance learning.
So Rox, can I interrupt you to be helpful for a second?
Yep.
So if you make that motion right now and it gets voted down, or you don't get a second, you don't get to vote again. I would, I would encourage you to make that after we have some discussion and kind of see where everybody's at.
Sure.
In case, in case the next motion's very similar, but I'll be happy to assist to make sure that we get a chance to vote on that if you want. But if, it seems a little premature in the discussion.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That's, that's a great idea. All I wanted, all I wanted to do was say that there's a lot of danger there and I don't want to have even one death. So, yeah, I trust that you'll help me get that resolution in or modify it when and if we're ready. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rox.
Ted, what did you mean when you said that she wasn't able to vote again if she changed that? What does that mean?
So if, if she right now voted without appropriate discussion and, and put that and we had to call it to a vote, then you can only amend to a similar motion once. And I got a feeling that there's going to be more people on the same page as her. Just have trust in me that I'll make sure you guys get your, heard in an appropriate way.
Ted, can I clarify one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Not so much you can't vote again, everyone gets to vote.
You can't vote on the same thing.
Yeah, you can't bring the same amendment up if it fails.
And you can only amend the initial motion twice to going up and then you got to go back down. And then you can vote it down and then do something completely different afterwards. But that's where I just, I'll help you guys.
Yep.
All right. So who, who would like to speak next as a board member? Well, I'll tell you what, I got a little statement that I prepared that I think will be kind of helpful to get the conversation started if you guys will bear with me for a second. I have it up, I just got to bring up that screen. All right, so it's a little, I wrote it not too long ago, but I think it's important. "Our public schools have become far more than institutions of education that they were initially meant to be. Today, our schools are expected to provide everything from basic hygiene help to substance abuse training to teaching calculus. If today's decision was purely based on educating our students, then I would not have struggled with it so much. For some of the students, the only adult that listens to them and encourages them is their teachers or bus drivers or coaches. The only warm meal a student receives is oftentimes a free or reduced meal that they get from the schools, which we have a significantly high number of compared to the rest of the state. And now we're about to ask our teachers to take those roles and add a degree of difficulty by adding distance learning to it as well. They will no doubt be as professional and dedicated as they were when they were quickly forced to adapt at the end of the last school year. Going forward, it will be important for their sanity that no matter which model we go with, that we set boundaries for students and teachers so that they're not working 18 hours a day like they did last year. No matter what we decide, it will not be popular with everyone. We literally are voting for what matters most to our parents, their children, and also our future. With distance learning, we have to realize that not every student has someone to help them with their homework or maybe their support system isn't technologically savvy enough to even get the student connected. This is definitely no win situation and many people told me after the governor's announcement that they wouldn't want to be in our shoes right now. And I just wanted to say that I'm very grateful for the people that are on the board that, after talking to them and how seriously that they took it, I'm glad that they're in their shoes that they're in. And so my proposal would also be something similar that I would like to see now I'm off script here. But what I would like to see is kind of a compromise where we give the teachers some time to ease into it and we, I think something where we do the model that's proposed, I'm still a little up in air on preschool and I'd like to talk about that more. But the model that's proposed, but we started off with a slow rollout where we have a month to basically meet that goal of getting there. That way we can get the students in. In that meantime, it doesn't mean that we're not going to have classes and education, but we can get the students accustomed and set up on how they're supposed to learn. We can break it down into even smaller groups than what we have right now so that there can be a little bit more teacher-student interaction at first too, to make them comfortable with this uncomfortable situation. And so that, kind of a slower rollout, I don't know if a month makes sense, but my idea behind it is it takes two weeks for a lot of this COVID stuff to kind of catch up. And so we'll have nationally, we're either going to have a super high number or even more super high number after school starts back up of COVID cases. But what we'll have is a lot of schools that'll be, have done it right too. And we'll see that their case numbers aren't going to rise in the same way because they did it this way or that way. And we'll have some ideas of what would work and that buys us not only the two weeks of how long it takes for COVID to catch up and make people sick, but it'll give us an extra two weeks of a little bit of cushion. And I know that the teachers already have tons of anxiety with going into this. So no matter what decision, whether you go with what I'm suggesting or anybody else's, I just really want to have a decision by the end of tonight. That's what I have to say for now. Yep, Terry, you're up. Just the green light on this. Yep. Oh, we can, Mike. Kevin, can you hear him?
Can't, no.
Okay. Is the green light on?
All right. Can everybody hear me now? Kevin?
Yep, yep.
All right. I want to reiterate, but Ted said in regards to kids needing to get back to school. I worked for Human Services and Public Health for 30 years and I can't imagine a lot of the children that came in our doors and those that have worked with their families, I can't imagine them, those families going without their kids, having some type of actual schoolroom classes and also help with their homework. Just an example, and I don't know if I, this is, I should be talking about this, but a good example of that is one day, I don't go to Barter Bar very often, but I was in there once having a beer at about midnight. And I had a, a mother come up to me and they were intoxicated and I know they're in the bar quite often. And they came and said, could you come over and, and help my student with, I don't know if it's math or reading? And of course I couldn't do that, but I know a lot of families that do not work with their kids and there's, the teachers are all they have or a neighbor or maybe a grandparent. But saying that, I also am concerned about the safety without a question. And because of that, I also agree with Ted in that I think maybe this is too aggressive of startup and maybe what we could do is start slower. I heard an idea from one of the, I had one of the letters or one of the statements I read today. And that was maybe starting with one day a week, having smaller, I think what they call it is pod, smaller groups. And they, so the students can kind of get into it a little easier, a little, you know, without the pressure of learning everything. And also the teachers, the teachers, this is going to be a big, big change for them, having to do all of this and teach correctly. So because of that, I think we need to start having the kids in class, but maybe a, the two days a week, for instance, for the high school. I mean, I like that idea, but I think we need to do it a lot slower and even if it's only a few weeks, but let the teachers and the kids get used to this process. Thanks.
Can I speak? I didn't hear from Ted, but.
Go ahead, Jen. Sorry.
Okay. That's okay. I'm going to echo similar thoughts. I take, like Ted says, I take this, I also take this decision very seriously because I believe it's, it's the safety and health, wellness and safety of our entire community that rides on this. I know the governor has made suggestions, the Department of Ed and the Department of Health have made suggestions and they're using the best evidence that they can, but we don't really have all the information. And in some communities, kind of like ours, there, there aren't places where we have two or 300 people in a building at a time. So it's a bit of an experiment and I'm very, I'm very much in support of a slow roll. I have good friends who've lost people they love too early. I have a friend who, a person, acquaintance we know who is off the ventilator, but he's months ago, but he's not back to normal yet. Certainly, people are only sick for a short time and that's great, but, but wellness is really important. And as the healthcare provider, I've also had an opportunity to try to learn what it's like to slowly open up. We had no outpatient, no outpatients in the therapy department where I work and we slowly increased our numbers, like really slowly. At first it was only one ther, one patient in the, in the therapy department until we knew we could do it safely and then we opened it up. So now we practice things so much, we've gotten better at things. Screens are faster, we are cleaning better, we're more thoughtful about what we do, we're used to wearing masks, there's so many things we're more used to. So with those types of things, that's what I went into it, over this past couple of weeks. I've talked to department heads, administrators, teachers, some parents have tried to research other districts, what they're doing near and far, big and small, looking at what the national thoughts are on opening schools. And I think we have to be unique to our community and we have the privilege to be able to say we can go slow. I think we have to have, safety is, it has to be our first and foremost priority. And then the quality of the education, thinking of the whole student like Terry and Ted said. I mean, I get that the whole student isn't just about how well they understand an equation in math. It's about, it's about safety, it's about support, it's about social connections, social emotional learning, mental health, basic nutrition, all sorts of things. So I valued that. And then the last thing we need to be thinking about is convenience. If we're doing safety well, and the quality of education is as best as possible in this very unique situation, things will sometimes be inconvenient, Kevin mentioned it, it's gonna be a fluid year. Um, and our success, no matter what we choose, will, will rest on so many things. There's so many, there's so many balls in the air with organization, education for parents and staff and students, cooperation from families and all staff members, compliance from families about masks, and timeliness, and drop-offs, and pickups, and all these things. Creativity on how do we equitably provide education to children with IEPs, or children with mental health issues, or other barriers. Clear boundaries, like what it means that you do need to wear a mask, and if you, if you're able to wear a mask, you need to do that, or maybe you need to distance learn. It's about setting real clear definitions of what that means, not letting it be, "Well, that's good enough," because it's people's safety that matters. Wondering what our cases are like, how we do with substitutes, and that we, we need to rely on every family to have a steady backup. If we're gonna be, if, if we're gonna be in class, we don't know how long we can be in class. We've said this before tonight and other nights, but having every family know that if class is not able to ha, be, if your kids are not able to be in class on a scheduled day, you have to have a plan. And, um, we can't do it without, without family and family support. So I would like to suggest, I cannot, I cannot vote for the current plan because I feel like it's experimenting with too many kids in the district, at, in the, in the building at a time. So I would like to make the following suggestions, and we can talk about them, or we can amend, or whatever, or not. I know I may not get support in this, but I've talked to a lot of people about it. I consider it kind of a slow roll, that we would start, um, preschool would be hybrid two days, and FES would be hybrid two days. And that means instead of all of the kids, pre-K to five in the building, you would have half those kids in the building. So if a teacher has, let's say, a first-grade teacher has, in the current plan, fifth, let's say, twelve kids in the room, they would have six in the room Monday, Tuesday, and six Thursday, Friday. And that way, they are, have less kids in the room, they can deal with space, there's less kids on a bus, bus drivers get to educate kids and parents at bus stops, there's less kids to be screened at a time, because that's gonna get backed up, especially depending on weather. And what do you do when you need masks, and there's so many things that we're trying to work out. There's so much time that, that teachers are gonna have kids in their room, they have to, there, there's a new sorting that has to happen, bathroom breaks are a new, gonna be handled differently. Scheduled Zooms are gonna be handled differently, um, preschoolers, teachers moving from room to room, needing mask breaks, all specialists are gonna be pushed in, there's so many things that are different, that if you had less kids to worry about, you could do it better, safer, make better connections with those kids, potentially get better practice at what distance learning's gonna look like, um, and have a little smoother start. My suggestion is also at Falls High School to have a hybrid, but just one day instead of two days. So my suggestion is to have a quarter of the kids, because right now, we would have, at Falls Bell, roughly, I mean, at Falls High, roughly two hundred and fifty building, people in the building. And there, as Rock said, potentially more will, more able to share, to be infectious, to, to more easily spread the virus if they were positive. They are, we are dependent on, you know, some of these kids are working, some of them are, um, not social distancing until now, um, kids are maybe more independent as, as at the older grades. They're gonna be traveling from room to room to room, so one teacher in the current model would be interacting, you know, with forty-five different kids a day. And so you're reliant on a lot of things to be practiced. So I would say they come one day a week for the first two weeks, and then I think this is safer, because it reduces some of those variables. I think it's a better product, staff have more support, and more time to do a long list of what we're asking them to do differently. Logistically, I think it's easier, and people can, we can solve problems. I mean, September's already kind of chaotic with scheduling, and who goes where, and kids figuring out how it is to be in school again, and parents forgetting the process, and all these things, so it allows us a little more time to deal with those things, rather than saying, "Well, I can't get there for a while because I have all these kids I need to deal with with this." It's spread too thin in the model that is being proposed. It allows creative problem solving for the use of staff, so on the days that there aren't, staff in, you know, like say there are less kids, and so there may have more para-time, they can help make things more prepared for distance learning, or copying, or cleaning, or, um, helping a teacher prepare something that they otherwise wouldn't be able to, like we can, or, or working one-on-one, um, with special needs students, or there's, there's all these ways that we can use these extra people, um, and having more than less, I think is better. And I think, I think if we open slow like this, we can stay potentially open longer, safer, with a better product. The last part of my suggestions are, I would recommend we start later, either, because the elementary school, they will not be in the building, almost for two weeks, is what I'm told. And then, they will be, some of them, some of those teachers will be changing classes, and will be changing grades, classrooms, and changing grades. That's an awful lot, and it's stressful in other ways, as you can imagine from everything we've already talked about. So either starting two days later on the tenth, or on the fourteenth, is my suggestion. I also like the suggestion for at least one month to do early out every day. That may seem like a lot, but when you have students in your class all day, and you know you're gonna have families, a decent number of families that are gonna be distance learning, you need to make connections with those, with those families in a time that works for those families. You'll be dealing with videos, you'll be figuring out what's working, maybe you'll be doing, maybe teachers will be meeting with other groups of teachers to figure out what's working for them. Maybe there's gonna be some creative problem solving of, maybe one of the kindergarten teachers can be the, for this week, you're the on-call from six to ten PM. That's when some parents are talking to teachers, we can't expect every teacher to be working until ten PM and just be that flexible. So I think it allows for more creativity in planning, again, a better product, and, um, and that's their, you know, kind of almost their prep time. And then, I would like us to think about what we would, what we would collect for data and criteria, so what we would decide is to open up a little bit more, so at our two week, at about two weeks is our next board meeting, we could look at, are we ready to go more, or do we stay two more weeks like this? It's gonna take a couple of weeks to know if numbers in our local area are increasing. We'll have been sorting through exposure, and who's quarantined and who's not, we'll know more about that. And, you know, maybe it is two weeks that we start like that, maybe it's four weeks that we start like that. Maybe we keep it a little longer than we think, because we can keep kids partially in the building safely. Maybe we go after two weeks, we feel comfortable, everybody's practiced, and we're ready to go, and families are really being champions, and really, really partnering with us. I mean, if we know that, that because of pressures, parents send kids sick sometimes, they could be struggling, and know they don't have a backup, and then they don't tell us that a kid is sick, or they don't tell us that somebody in the house is tested positive, and we're relying on everybody to be a helper in this, and if we have, we just have to rely on everybody, and so there's so much education that has to happen. So, that's my idea of a slow rollout. I know that maybe come flu season, it's gonna look different, but you'll have more time face-to-face with kids to get a better start, and hopefully still a safe start. Thanks for listening.
Jen, can I ask one clarifying question?
Yep.
Because I'm just trying to take notes, so that when we get to a point, if we amend or whatever, would you adopt, though, the same theory that we add some staff to those grades in the elementary, so that we can reduce numbers, you know, in, in the grades? Or are you saying stick with, like, our traditional numbers, since we're going in a quarter or in half, you know, at the elementary?
I, I recommend that we still add that staff, because the goal would be, because it'd be incremental, like, that's, the goal would be, if we do this right, we can maybe get to the pro, proposal as presented. And if not, then we have an extra staff to maybe, maybe again, when not, if more families pull their kids out, maybe we don't need every staff member to have a number of kids in their room, and maybe there would make more sense for the third-grade class, you know, the teachers decide, we do want one person to be the distance learner, and they have more of a flex schedule.
I just wanted to be clear if, if it comes, I appreciate that, thank you.
Alright, um, any other board members? I know you guys all wanna talk, so who wants to talk next?
I'll talk.
Alright, mics up.
Okay, I'd like everybody to know that, uh, I'm happy I'm on the school board to make this tough decision tonight. It's been weighing on the school board, I know, uh, you have a few sleepless nights about this, and, and, uh, this is a real big night for a big decision. Safety is real big on my terms, um, I want the kids back in school. I don't want them sitting at home, but I also know that, uh, we have to look at safety, too. So, looking the whole situation over, I believe, in unity with the school board, and I can see already that the majority's looking at a slow startup. Uh, I can go along with that. The thing is, we have to agree on what that slow up is gonna be, and it should be for the right reasons, and, and safety should be right up at the top, so, um, I'm just glad I'm here tonight to be able to vote on it, and I can agree with, uh, starting out slow, but put the kids back in the school as quick as we can, and, uh, yeah, I, I love the kids. I mean, we're trying to make the right decision, and, um, I think I can see already, you know, the school board used to be three-three voting, when there were six school board members, and there were nights when things failed. Then we passed it, seven members on the school board, now we can finish it up tonight, and hopefully it'll be in unity that we're all happy about, but like, it's been mentioned before, you don't please everybody, but I think, uh, if we can be unity as a school board the best we can, then we can move forward, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Uh, Michelle, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, yeah, I, I agree with a lot of the statements that have been made, without me reiterating them again. Obviously, the safety and health of our students is definitely a priority, and, um, I agree with somewhat phasing in the plan that Kevin has put into place. With that being said, that we would, we would get to Kevin's plan in the end, where, where, where he is established and, and what he's got there, so whether it be two weeks or a month that we take to get to that full plan, phasing it in, I think we need to, to move in that direction.
Alright, I, yeah, I agree with that.
And I, and I don't know that, uh, we need to push out the start date any farther than it already, than it already is. I guess the building, um, you know, in, in talking to Tom, I don't know if you can reiterate that, Kevin, but I think he said the building's gonna be ready next Monday for the teachers to move in the elementary.
A couple of things, um, the, first of all, when, and, um, I appreciate the credit, but I, I would say the plan is a group plan. Um, you, you know, as far as it's not...
Oh, well, the proposal, the proposal.
Correct, um, as far as the, um, the element, you know, the high school, you know, is pretty much ready to go. There's always fine-tuning details, the elementary, which the main project, the big project's going on, will be a full release, I'm told, on the twenty-fourth. Yeah, that is only two weeks, you know, before the start of school, and we can have a conversation whether, you know, um, we need an extra day or two, yeah, typically, and, and I'm just giving, giving the teachers credit, August first, I always say, the building opens up, so to speak, and elementary and high school staff start coming in on their own schedule, they don't have to, but yeah, it, it allows them to pick and choose days, you know, to be in and get their room ready and be prepared, um, and hats off to them. Unfortunately, this year with this project, that's, you know, not, not an option, so it does put some additional stress on. And so again, I'm not looking at, um, whether we delay a day or two or not. The only thing, again, I wanna, um, mention to the board, whether you're aware or not, we have technically five days the governor's given us, that we can use for additional planning, or additional things that come up. Say mid-year, we can't hold class for a few days because of some reason, that's fine, we don't have to make five days. It's like that, uh, March, those eight days in March last year where they allowed us to plan, we got to count those to student contact dates, okay, so they built five days in. But keep in mind, not knowing what the year's gonna look like, I guess I would hate to burn, you know, all of those days, or a high number of them up, because we could run into issues where two, three days, hey, we don't have enough staff because of the sub-issue, you know, so I just throw that out, that, um, and, and again, it's across the board, there is one school doing exactly that, they're using those five days right off the start to kind of push things back, give more planning time. They also know if they run into an issue mid-year, it could possibly be adding days on the backend, which there's a contractual issue to that as well, um, because, or you take the hit on losing the five days of funding. So, I, I think it's open for discussion where, whether we need a day or two, you know, extra to roll this out, but keep in mind, we're limited, you know, on those days, unless we beg, beg for more from the state and they grant it, that's always an option, too, but, um...
Yeah, I, I, after, I just, uh, Missy told me about that last Friday, and so I, I was, I hadn't thought about it, um, until then, but I, I'm kind of with, uh, you, Kevin, where I, I would hate to burn through five days, um, when so much uncertainty is out there, but I'd be open to a, um, a couple of days of that to be some sort of prep.
And Ted, one, one other thing, and, and, and we're not all sitting in the same room, but at some point, I would like to alabot him and Missy if they want to.
Yeah, that's actually, they were next in my, on my list, to start asking them what they thought, I think, um, I wanted to see what the, uh, each board member had to say first, but, um, Tony, did you have enough time to talk earlier, or did you talk?
Oh, I actually have a few things to add, to add.
Why don't you go, and then we'll move on, because I, I'd really like as much input in this as possible, so.
I agree with Rock, I feel that we're rushing, and I think if we were just to start super slow, like I'm guessing fully back a little bit further, as far as starting the students out with distance learning, um, getting the teachers into their classroom, kind of seeing how all of that's going. Um, one of the things that I just read today in the Duluth News Tribune was, um, and this is coming from the Minnesota Department of Health and the CDC, they're saying that anyone who has spent fifteen minutes within six feet of an individual who tests positive for COVID-19 is considered a close contact that may have to quarantine for fourteen days. Even if their test comes negative, they still, it doesn't shorten the timeline for the fourteen days. So if we put people in classrooms, and our teachers are bouncing from one room to the next, possibly with the plant C, they're gonna be seeing about ninety students a day, that's a lot of spread super fast. And I think the more we pull back, the better it's gonna be for everybody, just to, um, you know, I, one of the things is before we open, I would love for staff to kind of go into each classroom and sit down and have like a visual picture that we can share online, so people actually can see what a classroom is going to look like. It's a lot more sterile than they imagine, it's not the normal that they're thinking they're gonna go into. Like, I really think a visual picture for everybody could maybe change them either way, whether it be going to school or distance learning fully. And I know that a lot of the staff that we've heard from feel they're ready for in-person stuff, but I've also heard the opposite, that some of them are really worried about it. So as I was just kind of looking through the research blueprint, um, that we received today, one of the things that says is that in the planning, we'd like to remain as flexible as possible to accommodate staff and students. I guess with that, does that mean that staff would be able to possibly distance learn from home, even if the other teachers are in? Like, is that their option, or is that not their option?
No, from, from my stance on that is, that is a, how would you say, depending on the situation and the availability. Um, you know, it's not, and I'm just gonna use myself for an example, if I was a teacher, I just randomly, you know, without a medical excuse or a reason, we, we just can't accommodate the in-person, you'd have to, just say you had ten teachers out, you'd have to have ten staff additionally hired then for the kids that are in the building. Staff that we can accommodate with, and, and, and we've had conversation as far as, say, say a staff member has to quarantine, that is an example where I think, if, as long as they're feeling well, and, and again... That is example where I think if, as long as they're feeling well, and and again, we have to work with the union on this and could teach for those, that period of 14 days that they'd be out 10 school days, so to speak. I think we would cover, you know, their classroom coverage and have the qualified teacher teaching via Zoom like we're doing here. But if anyone, just say half your staff wants to stay home, we don't have the bodies to hire, you know, ha- half a staff to cover the kids in the school. You see what I'm getting?
Right, but if, if the teacher has been around the COVID, wouldn't all the students as well be then?
The, the Department of Health will work with us and and determine who needs to be out in a situation and who does not have to be out. And and again, it's um, that's just what we've been told as far as guidance that, you know, if someone is exposed, they will work with us. They regional teams up. So it's not necessarily someone from the cities. It's actually through Northwest Service Co-op. They have staff that will work as well with our local staff, meaning not only our staff at school, but the county people, city people, as a group will come through and do the contract trace. Now, it's not left on, I'm going to say Leah, myself, Tim, Missy, you know, to be sole judge. It's a group that looks and says, you know, with more info than, or more knowledge, I should say, than I have, what group needs to be out? And they will, yeah, that group needs to be out and we will work with them. But I guess what I'm reading at is if, just say we, 25 teachers just said, you know what, I'd prefer to be home. That's where I'm going to teach. We can't accommodate that. So taking the, the stance that they need a definable reason, you know, to be out, which means mainly a medical reason, if it is, we're going to have to look at how we can work with that group. But it's not just, I'm going to use the word, I'm a little scared, so I'm not going to come in. That's not a dependable reason. And and I'm not saying it's wrong. I mean, I have, you know, anxiety, let's put it that way. Certain things, but that anxiety doesn't clear me from coming in and teaching, so to speak.
So is there any way to take, let's say, a, a staff that's on site, a teacher that has a classroom of, you know, her, their group or whatever, would they be able to pull some of the distance learners from different classes to teach from home that way? Or is that not possible?
Well, what, what happens is if you, if you picked a grade and I, and I'm just grabbing my sheet here and Missy could probably speak better for it the way it's kind of mapped out. And I'm just picking, say, third grade um, under this, this model that we've been talking about, I think has four sections. And if you just split the numbers, it's 11 and a half students. Obviously, it can't be a half students. So two classes would be 11 and two classes would be 12 of the people that said they would be attending. And there's most likely one or two in each class that would be distance learning. So just say there's eight distance learners for third grade and I'm just picking a number. If you pull one of these teachers and say, okay, you're going to just take the distance learners, well, now you have to provide that um, is it 46 kids up between three teachers and the numbers get too high. So unfortunately, to do what some schools have done and it, you know, it's based on, I think, size. If we had seven or eight sections, just say, you know, we're a bigger school and get three from each class, well, it's a little more manageable to pull one teacher and say, okay, you're going to take these 24 kids or 21 or whatever the number is and take that off our plate. And you can keep your other six, you, you see what I'm saying? There's more to distribute what's left in person.
Right.
So I don't see how that's going to work.
As far as the, um, as far as the test results go, like if, if a student does come in and they get sent home and they have to go be tested. I've heard turnaround time of like a day versus up to almost 10 days. So how do we go about waiting in that time then? And who gets to be sent home in that time?
Again, the Department of Health will work with us, you, you know, with the teacher, the class, the school on who needs to be quarantined or sent home and who doesn't. Um, you, you know, an example being, I'm just, just using this um, because it came up from the Department of Health. If I had to just say I have 13 kids in my science class, eighth grade, I'm just picking something. And kids are assigned seats, there's, you know, social distance, six foot or more. And if somewhere in the process, the kid in the front row, first seat on the left, whatever, is exposed and find out, okay, they were exposed. They will come in and work and determine if that whole class is out, the teacher's out, if the whole school is out, if and and again, it's different at the high school than the elementary and I'm just being honest. Elementary classes that are contained, most likely you're not going to lose a huge, huge number. You might lose a whole class. But you're probably not going to lose a whole grade. You see what I'm getting at? Because they're mainly contained with that same class where it's going to be different in each situation. And I honestly can't tell you, you know, out of high school, does that mean 10 kids are going to be out or 20 or 50? We haven't got there yet, you, you know.
Well, then for that, I just feel like there is so many unknowns at this time and so many questions that people have and fears and everything. I think the best thing to do it would just be start super slow and ease very slowly into it.
What do you suggest? Like, what's your slow?
I would honestly love to see at least a couple of weeks beginning with distance learning first. And then maybe even to, you know, let's, let's grab four of this pod from the 12 students for that class and start with four and see how the screening is going to go. Um, who's monitoring the kids that aren't getting screened? Where are they standing? Where are they at? I just, I have so many questions about the whole day and how it's going to work that it, I just, I can't even imagine how the teachers feel right now. Us to have to do a Zoom class and have a microphone attached to them and have a mask and a face shield and make sure that everybody needs in a classroom, whether they be behavioral issues, um, somebody has to go to the bathroom. It's one person versus the world at this point. It's so much to put on their shoulders and I'm having a really hard time thinking that we could just throw them in the classroom and say, all right, welcome lots. We'll see what happens. I think we really need to pull back and like, go through a full day of what it could look like and um, ask ourselves all the questions that could come up in the scenarios and then figure out from there what's going to happen.
All right. Any other board members have anything to add before we hear from the principals?
I have a quick question.
Yep, go ahead, Jen.
It's a um, sorry, God, interrupting. Um, it's, let's say with a bad cold, right? So they can't be in with those six and seven. They've had no exposure. There's no suspicion. Maybe they've had it tested negative, but they're home for a while. Or maybe somebody has cancer. Comes down with cancer, hopefully not, but well, is, and maybe there's enough kids that, that parents have, when we actually have a plan and you resurvey them, you know that there's more kids out and you could have, maybe you have 25 kids in elementary that are out or in, in a kindergarten class or first grade class that are out distance learning every day because families have decided we're staying out the whole first quarter. Is it possible that you would look grade by grade and go, well, maybe we could then with the other three or four have with our official staff, we could have small groups in the building and let one person who has the most risk that we're concerned about, maybe it's not as bad as cancer, but maybe it's an autoimmune condition of some sort and we're going to try to let that person do distance learning uh, for safety sake. I mean, is there going to be that, I mean, can you imagine that kind of flexibility?
I mean, anything is possible, you, you know, I mean, again, I know people don't like, and and again, not saying this is right. I know elementary doesn't like, you know, my teacher is, and I'm just picking on, you know, Mrs. Evil and then partway through the year you actually get a different teacher. But that's our call, you know what I'm saying? That if, yeah, say, say we end up, I'm just going to pick a number. Say we end up with half of our people going distance learning. Um, higher percentage than, you know, I've heard from any district right now. Um, but if that happened, anything is on the table. You know, you might take two, two teachers, you know, because to be honest with you and and I'm not going to speak for all the teachers, the more kids that are on distance learning and not in the classroom, you know, the more work it becomes, you, you know, for them. If they have, and I'm just picking a number, 10 kids in class and no one distance learning, they don't have to worry about the Zoom piece of it. You, you know, they're, they're, where if, you know, on a slow rollout, just to be honest, yeah, it's easier possibly having five kids in your class on day one, you know, and managing the routine and trying it out. And I'm not, I'm not against that, you know, for, to start for whether it's a week or a short term. But they do have to manage those other kids now distance learning and try and get them, you know, with the class zooming or whatever they can or sending packets home, you know, that type of stuff. Um, and so it's not necessarily less work having less kids in the, in the classroom. You see what I'm saying? I think it may be needed for a startup or a rollout to, you know, see how things go. But the longer we do that, not saying it's less work, I just want to, you know, throw it out there. And that's the whole concept with at the high school level of having the kids zoom in at the same time as we're teaching. You know, that, that's trying to make the least amount of extra work, if you will, because the governor's order says you will have daily contact with your kids. And it's meant to be more than just collecting an assignment or giving them a packet. You know, it is interaction with them. So again, trying to take it to the next level is, hey, if they can do it all at once, meaning I have my five kids in the classroom, 10, whatever, and the rest online at the same time, watching my lecture or my experiment or whatever I'm doing, that, that, that's trying to alleviate all the extra, if you will. Um, is it perfect? No. And maybe we'll find out it doesn't work as well as we think or whatever and we may have to adjust. But that's where that idea came from so that we're not, okay, pre-recording or recording six lessons for a day to, you know, send online and then also teach in six hours. And well, all of a sudden you're into 18 hours a day, as someone said, or whatever. You know, it's trying to make it as manageable as possible.
Uh, Ted, Ted, this is Rox. I'd like to add something too.
All right, Rox.
Okay, so um, it, it, when Kevin, when you say that there's less or there could be more work that, with the one scenario, but unless, we always have to say unless everybody went to distance learning, then it would just be one mode. And the only other thing I want to add to that is that when, say the, the third kid from the left uh, is exposed and and say, you know, half the class or all the class is determined that they need to quarantine, we have to remember each and every student has an extended family and oftentimes they have either uh, uh, elderly relatives or sick relatives or uh, things like that in their family. That means that each one of them could be spreading uh, those things to a large number of people in their circle of people that they're around. So the spread could go really fast and and that's what I'm concerned about. If we waited until closer to January or till through December, I really believe there'll be a vaccine and then we would uh, be safer and we don't have to look back at a list of dead people. So there you go.
All right, thanks. Um.
Anything to add?
Okay. Bye, Jen.
From Tim and Missy or any staff that would be allowed, what if, what if we do two weeks of distance learning, two weeks of my slow roll, two weeks to get, and two more weeks to get to where Kevin is suggesting? You know, we can be as creative and we can include all ideas on the table. Two weeks of distance learning maybe means we don't start late. Maybe it means, I know it's not optimal. I know there's some teachers that want to teach the kids how to distance learn in person. I get that, but if we have two weeks and we don't have to start late, so we haven't lost time with our kids, we're doing lots of education for families and we see a little bit, because this is the statewide experiment. Everybody's going to kind of be learning in the first two weeks here. Do we get a, a little, do we get to learn from what has worked or hasn't worked from other districts? Um, and then say, okay, we're ready to, we really try things. Like, like Tony said, we say, let's, let's, why don't we have the bus pick all the school board members up and they walk us through the whole thing and they videotape it and people see what it looks like. We get on a bus, we know how we're loading the bus, we do the screening, we go to the classrooms, we see, we get a better idea of what parents are going to be, how kids are going to be experiencing. I don't think you can over educate on what's, this is going to be so difficult. Um, and you have more time. I mean, there's so many creative ways that we can try to do whatever best. I know they're all big time planned. Um, and logistically are hard, but I'd be interested to hear, what if we do that ultra slow roll? Somewhere between full distance learning until January, but not jumping in until we have a little bit more under our belt.
Um, thanks, Jen. So for Missy and Tim, um, Missy's here if you want to go first. Um, do you guys mind telling us um, what you would recommend and also um, what you, what you think your teachers would want, you know, as well? Give us their perspective since you've talked to them a lot more than we have. Um, Missy, if you, if you're going, do you mind grabbing that microphone right there? That might help a little bit? See if it turns on. Just talking to, somebody else to tell us if they can hear you.
Not hearing Ted.
Okay, she, he can't hear that. Is the green light on? Try it again. Nothing? That might be the bad one. Yeah, we're, try that one. Thank you. We've got one of them that's bad and we're not sure which one. Looks like your light might, might be on.
Oh, you did? Oh.
Good. Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I think Tim and I were paper rocking, rocking scissors to see who went first.
And you lost, sorry.
Yeah, okay, so I'll go. You know, I can't speak for all of my teachers. I can say where I think they would be at based on our meeting, but I don't know. They're all, each their own people.
Sure.
I don't know what the best answer is. If I had my choice um, based on the governor's data that he has set forward and the community responses of 80% of them needing their kids to be back in school and the ability to add that extra staff so that we can have small class sizes and we can have those sma- small class sizes without being a disruption to families when we're bouncing back and forth from face to face and hybrid and um, distance learning. Because these kids will be with the same consistent teacher. It's not, we're starting with this teacher and then all of a sudden you're moving to this teacher. I think right now by our numbers, it actually indicates that Falls Elementary could start fullback and I don't think we're ready for that. I think that choosing option C allows us to stay in that format where we're getting those kids back that need to be back in the building and we're still allowing social distancing. I, I seriously um, think that we need to do a, a late start and I would definitely recommend the week late start. And I would do that for a number of reasons, not only just the construction project, but I am in that building every day and we just got an email today asking that teachers not come into the 24th. And some of our teachers will be changing grades. A number of them are moving classrooms. That is a lot of work in itself. So that, on top of that, we're asking them to learn new technology. We have the webcams they need to learn. We have the microphones they need to learn. We have new learning management systems they need to learn for some of our teachers, accounts to set up. We have um, a whole bunch of new technology that needs to be set up by the technology department, along with drops that need to be moved. Uh, we have a large uh, $70,000 furniture order that's coming in next week. And then I was told that next week, we're also getting a new gym floor at Falls Elementary School. I mean, there are a number of things happening that I think that if we could have that extra week, it gives us time not only to be polished for families, but it gives us time to be ready for ourselves. We can practice recording some of those um, lessons. We can do some of those things that we aren't going to have time to do if they are only in for a week and then the next week we have workshop days because it's not as if during workshop days, they just get all that time to be in their room. And now, more than ever, I think we want to be the most polished and the most ready and the most educated that we can to explain to parents that these are the cleaning procedures we're going to do. This is what drop off looks like. And if we are planning an intimate open house at the elementary school, we need time to plan for that and to accommodate families to come in where we can talk to them about all the nuances of the school year. Um, I have a couple of concerns about a slow roll, especially for a month. I mean, if we're looking at a month, that puts some of these little kids in school for eight days only. I mean, eight days is not a lot. And when we are looking at our class loads, like, I'm just going to go through the list. So kindergarten has, each teacher has 12 kids in their room. One teacher has 13. They each have three kids that they're responsible for distance learning. Now, this is a number that is drastically reduced anyways. And our teachers are pros at wrangling and managing students. So now they're coming in already with a small group. If we are going on a slow roll, a hybrid, now they're coming in and you have six kids in your room, but you have nine kids that you're responsible. in your room, but you have nine kids that you're responsible at home for, and that's daily live interaction, and that's coming right from MDE. Same thing for first grade. We have 12 kids and two kids are distance learning. So now they're going to have six, and now they have eight kids at home every day that they're responsible for in distance learning. Second grade, 12 kids and three kids distance learning. I mean, you get the gist of it, right? Third grade, same thing, 12 and three kids, and some have two kids that are distance learning. Fourth grade, we have 14 kids and four kids distance learning. So now you have seven, and you have 11 kids at home that you're responsible for, for that daily live interaction, to find a time that if they aren't able to log into that Zoom, that you're going to find a time that you're able to contact each of them. I struggle with that piece, because I think that adds an extra burden and extra stress on teachers' plates, whereas if they're responsible for 12 kids in front of them, and they know there's two kids out there that they need to be checking in if they didn't log on to their Zoom, that's very reasonable to accomplish in their 77-minute prep period. So those are some of my concerns there. I'm also very concerned with the daycare portion. Right now, we have 55 students that are signed up for daycare, and of those 55 students, I believe the majority of them qualify for tier-one students. So I ask myself, where are those kids going to go? Right now, the daycare is very minimal and is scheduled to be in the Falls Elementary School library, and that I can accommodate eight kids by the fire marshal capacity. And it's minimal because we are at school Monday through Friday. So we're only absorbing some of those preschool kids who wouldn't have been normally scheduled on those days. So now we are shooting some of those kids out into other days, and I'm wondering where we're going to get the staff to staff those rooms. And I'm also wondering where those rooms are coming from, because we are taking six rooms at the high school for preschool, and we're using every inch of space at Falls L for our students. So I'm just wondering where those staff are coming from, because we aren't going to have extra staff to go over and be with those students. I mean, especially if those staff are going to be helping with our kids that are in the classroom. And I think it also can create a false sense of security, like, we're getting used to, like, six kids. I don't think we're going to know what happens until we get all our kids. The other thing I think that is that you're going to spend an absorbent amount of time then establishing routines and building relationships between kids that are in and out of the building, and then when they come back altogether, while you may have done some of that online, it's a lot harder to do online when you have so many students that you're responsible for and then in your classroom. So you spend more time doing that. So when do we have time to also get to our curriculum? I have no doubt that my teachers are going to love the kids, and I know that this is not going to be a typical school year, and we need to educate families, and we need to start educating them now on what it looks like, that it will be a sterile environment. It will be a lot different than we're used to. But the teachers at Falls Elementary love our kids, and they're going to welcome them, and they're going to build relationships. We just need to know what that looks like. It's, it's, um, it's been a long road getting here, but that is what I would propose, I guess.
So can I clarify that? So that's, what you would like is what's proposed currently, but with five days of advanced time off?
I would like the week late start. It would be four days off, plus we have an October 5 day you could probably use as a floater, so you could have two days to burn later. I mean, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, so I guess the other thing, another question I have, because that's what I got from what you had, but you talked about some difficulties with the distance learning on having the, the kids, like, all the different combinations and possibilities. How is this plan going to help with any of that? Like, they're still doing, the teachers are still doing the distance learning.
Because they're only responsible for two kids that are distance learning. They have 12 kids in front of them in the building, and maybe two kids are at home, three kids are at home. It's more manageable.
Okay. I was just curious.
In my opinion, I mean, you might want to ask some teachers that are here, they might have some input, rather than just asking me what their feelings are.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
What if, so I have heard from some parents who said, well, I, and I was one of those parents, I said, well, tentatively, I'm going to have a plan for my kids to start, but depending on the model and how well things are followed and how compliant everybody is and how safe it feels, I might choose to have them come out. There'll be people who will decide something different from the survey tonight by, based on whatever we decide. What if you have another 5% or 10% distance learning, and now you have eight kids or seven kids and five kids distance learning? I mean, then it's, then it's already the, what we're already suggesting, you know? So I feel like, I hear what you're saying, and I don't want to add more work for sure. It's already so much. But to me, I can't justify more people in the building, because it might not be the best. If the first couple, the first couple of weeks are going to be light no matter what, I mean, everybody's going to be learning so many new things, that I'm not worried if they don't get as much content that week, and they'll have a smaller group that they're meeting with their families. To say it's too much work to put everybody, and we have to then put everybody in the building, safety-wise, I just can't. But I hear what you're saying. I mean, I understand, every, every point that I've ever heard from everybody so far, none of it's been ridiculous. These are all serious points, they're just hard to figure out which one is.
And also, if the numbers go up of cases near the start date of school, then parents may change their mind.
Yeah, that's true. Tim, would you like to tell us about your perspective?
Sure. Well, to begin with, like Missy said, I don't have the answer to what the best way to open up is, is either. I'm concerned about both the safety of our students and our staff, and I agree, we have many new procedures that we need to try to learn ourselves as a staff and to also teach to our students. And this is going to take some time to, both for our staff to learn those and to teach those to the students so that we work those out properly. And as Jen mentioned, she mentioned over at the hospital, you know, they, they did start slowly, and then they were able to learn those procedures and to tweak them and make them better. And like Missy said, I agree that we want to have those things polished so that when our students do come back, and even when we have our meet-the-teacher night we talked about in our teacher groups, or our planning group, that, you know, we're going to offer an online option for parents who don't want to come in, but also have parents come in and do the full check, have the temperature check at the door, and show them what we put in place so that they can see, you know, what it's going to be like for their students when they come to school. You know, as far as our teachers, our high school teachers have very differing concerns and different levels of how they want to start the school year, and I can't speak for all of them. I think you've heard from some, and there are people who want to start distance learning, there are people who want to be back in the building. And, you know, we did agree, I think, as our group, that having the students in the building to some extent, however that is, if it's a half, if it's a quarter, we felt that giving them the technology and teaching them how to use that technology in the event that we are going to have to go distance learning, or even in a hybrid setting where they're going to be home for a couple of days each week, that having them in school so that we can teach them how to use those things instead of like last year where everything just halted on March 13th, and we started in on distance learning without really any help in class, it just all started distance learning. So if we had that time with them at the beginning of the year, we can get them their technology, we can teach them how to use it, and teach them the procedures and how we're going to run things. Just took a couple notes here. You know, as far as starting late, I understand, Missy, what she's saying. Fortunately for us at the high school, we're not in the same situation they are at the elementary. Our rooms are available for staff to get into. We do have a number of things that we need to talk about as far as training. We actually have a professional development team meeting tonight at 8:00. After the meeting, and after we have a plan in place, we know what we're doing, we're going to start planning tonight for those teacher in-service days so that we can get the training set up for the teachers to, you know, begin preparing them that, that week of September 1st. So with that being said, as far as the late start at the high school, I don't know if that would be as important for us since we can get into our rooms right now. More training, more practice on learning procedures could also, I mean, always be a positive thing. So I mean, if we had extra days, I'm sure we would put them to really great use and work on those procedures. And I think, like many people have said, the better off, you know, the better our, our plan is as far as, you know, how kids are coming into the building, how they're going from class to class, all those things, so that staff knows them and has them down so that we can teach our students is critical, because if we don't know what we're doing, it's hard to teach kids on how we're supposed to do that. So there's many, many things that need to be, you know, that are still in the planning process, because we're working with IEA, and a lot of those things will be finalized, and we'll be able to have those all in place to share with teachers. And my hope is to teach it before they come back in the in-service days. But there is going to be a lot to learn, not just with the technology, but just the logistics of how things will work in our classrooms, in the hallways, before school, at lunch, at the recess, all those different things. So in this case, it's really important that we have those down so that when school starts and everyone knows the first day of school is, like, we always have things that don't run like we thought they were going to run, and we get them fixed usually by the end of the day. But in this case, we want to make sure that we're starting out and we have as few of those glitches as possible, especially when it, you know, pertains to the safety of the students and staff. So the model that we had in place or that we've talked about with students coming in two days a week, I have worked it out, or I'm in the process of working it out, and Mr. Grewatz has been helping me in Skyward, we're adding sections so that we can get them split into two groups. I know that Jen has talked about splitting into four groups, we could surely do that to reduce the numbers in our building. So I mean, I am, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to, you know, to make whatever plan you guys decide on work, and I just wish I could tell you what, what the very best plan is, and I just can't tell you what that is right now, you know?
That's too bad.
I know, I mean, there's just so many unknowns.
Yeah, I hear you. Well, thank you.
Are we going to have, Ted, are we going to have a union voice for the teachers or parents or anyone? We've heard some voices.
Well, I'm starting at the top and working my way down. So if you have any questions for the principals at this moment, I think that that would be a good place to start, but then I'm going to open it up to any teacher that would like to say something, if they do or not, that's fine. But do we have any questions for Tim or Missy right now? No? All right. Well, then, I think that if, if there's any teacher that's on Zoom or in person here, if they'd like to give a perspective of their concerns or anything, I'd very much so welcome that now, or it could be any staff member. It's not necessarily a public open forum, but to be honest with you guys, it's your guys' lives that are going to be, you know, in the balance here when you come to school, that, yours and your students. So I think it's important you have a say in what that is.
Ted, I didn't understand, did you say union was, was the union going to do anything too, like John or anyone?
In the sense that John's a teacher and he's welcome to talk, he fits underneath that umbrella for sure.
Okay.
If he's on. So if any teacher would like to speak up, that's fine.
This is John, I can speak.
Thanks.
I'm not going to speak for every staff member, especially elementary, because I haven't been part of their meetings to hear what they've been talking about. I can just kind of speak from, I guess, the high school group, working with Tim. You know, we've got, obviously, health and concern of people is our priority, and what's I can look at, but there's so many unknowns, like Tim said, we don't know, you know, it's, it's scary going to something you don't know what it's going to look like. Usually, teachers are very, very confident in what we do and our practices and routines, and this year, none of those looked the same. So we're walking in a building with so many unknowns that it's really scary for a lot of people. I've had so many emails and texts and calls with just very anxious, scared people, because they don't know what this is going to look like. You know, even the cleaning procedure can be awesome on paper, but until you actually see it in practice, you don't know what it's going to be like. So there's just many of those concerns about your classroom, and then we're going to be teaching, you know, what method and where and how, and, you know, I feel for the elementary staff of, you know, the room problem and then changing classes, and that, that's the whole thing, I can't even imagine what that's like. But I know the last Zoom we had with the high school staff, our board, our teammates, you want to call them, talking about the different plans, we were kind of in a consensus as a group that we would like to see a week or two of the hybrid at the high school to get the kids their textbooks and their, their technology and teach them how to use it and the protocol of when we're in school, we do, but then we relate to see distance until the end of the first quarter, just to kind of, to see how things are going and get the, you know, the safety precautions out there, and hopefully we can learn from other schools in that meantime, how things are going who are more face-to-face. That's, we kind of, I guess, talked about at the very end, the last one is that, the protocol, and then we have time to fix things, to address problems, you know, of things that happened along the way, like Tim says, things always happen, to get to fix those. So I guess that's my take. But of course, the health and well-being of everyone that walks in the building is priority for the union side of it, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody have any questions for John?
This is Chris Hempstead, can I say a word?
Yeah, go ahead. Thanks, Chris.
So I would like to echo John's comment. I really like the idea of a, of a couple-week learning experience for everyone, and then distance learning until at least the end of the first quarter. The other concern I have is in the scientific community, the global scientific community, there's a lot of consensus right now that COVID is actually aerosol spread, which is a big deal. That's like worst-case scenario. And on a building basis, that means you should turn off the air circulation system. So I mean, that's a, that's a matter for, for concern, I think. And I don't know what that means on a technical level, but that's a big deal.
And Chris, this is Rox, and I guess the other thing related to the scientific information, so if we have kids sitting a certain distance away and it's aerosol spread, then, say, kids are sneezing or whatever, then they should be farther away, in my, from what I understand.
Roxy, aerosol, it doesn't really matter.
Pardon?
That would be involved in a sneeze or something like that. These are particles that get through anything. And aerosol is tiny. It's, 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 it's something that you can't control. You just can't. But one of the worst-case scenarios for it is a recirculating air system.
Okay, I thought the distance of the sneeze or whatever had something to do with the germs being spread and how much.
Well, it absolutely does, but those are much larger particles. So there's no, there's not a huge consensus yet, but there's a lot of scientists right now beginning to look at the data, and they're seeing a suggestion that it's aerosol, which...
Which means it's there all the time.
It's everywhere.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris. Is there any other teachers that would like to address us now? We have one in here. Do you mind, like, grabbing Missy's microphone, if that's okay? Thank you. And then just introduce yourself.
Hi, this is Sarah Went, and I'm going to start, my voice is shaking, I'm so comfortable in front of kids, I am not comfortable in front of adults and 55 people out in Cyberland. For us as teachers, August is really just one long Sunday night. I saw that meme quite a few years ago, and we truly do spend the whole month of August prepping and getting ready. In the letter that I sent to the board today, I did mention that, you know, we're normally ready by now, we could do an open house right now, and our classrooms would be ready, we would know what we're giving to, to kids and to parents, and we are just not at that place right now. As a teacher, I pride myself on building relationships with kids. Every student that walks into my classroom gets a personal greeting, whether they want a hug or a high five or a whatever it is. And that was one of the first things that I did when this all happened was, all right, these aren't going to look the same, what can this look like for me in my classroom? So we're doing, you know, air bumps, and we're doing different things, and that's something I can control. I can't control the spread of, of this, I can only do what is best. And I personally don't know that being home is even, there are so many other scenarios. Kids are not only coming to school, they are going to practices, and they are going to do different things. And so us, by pushing this out, I just don't know that it's keeping them any safer, with the exception of... just don't know that it's keeping them any safer with the exception of being within my classroom and I can control that. My kids are connected to me. I've spent the whole summer on Facebook messages with kids about lost pets and deceased grandparents and they, they want to be with us. There's kids that drive, have told me they can't even drive by the school because they're so sad. They just want to be here. And those are the kids that we really need, need to get back. And a lot of the kids that need us the most, we might not even think that they're those kids that need us the most. More exposure was one of the main things for me. I've, if we did go to some kind of a hybrid plan, my kids would be all over the place. They would be at school on the days they're at school. They would be at daycare on the days that they are not in school or potentially with, with family friends. And I just look at, I love our plan of having a consistent same group of kids, five days a week. That's, we know where they are and a lot of that extra exposure is limited. Part of the distance learning at the end of last school year, kids had different devices. I know now we're talking potentially they would all have a Chromebook or they would all have an iPad, but it's really hard to navigate and to teach them that platform without seeing what they see. I look at something on my phone and it's different than my iPad and it's different than my computer or your computer. And I am a proponent for getting them in the classroom as long as we can get them so that we can help them. So when it comes to the point where they need to be home for two weeks, they can do that readily and it's a seamless transition from one to the other. I think the other, the other part of this is I do have a sixth grader that attends or a seventh grader that attends school in Little Fork. Little Fork is going back, they live at the same county, same protocols. They are going back full-time with up to 30 kids in a class and somehow they've made that work. They're not adding teachers. They're not doing the different things that we might be doing to try to help maintain a safer environment. And I'm not saying that's a bad choice, but that's a choice. And we know that as fluid as our scenarios are up here, if you've got Little Fork and Indus and St. Thomas back full-time every day, I don't know how many kids they can take in, but there's a lot of parents that are gonna look elsewhere and that's going to really affect us next school year if everybody wants to come back, knowing the funding and all of that. So I don't have the answers. I do know that we're gonna make whatever you decide tonight work for, for us and the kids so that they want to be there and we want to be there, but we just really need a decision to be made so that we can move forward.
Thank you very much.
I would like to say that Little Fork hasn't made it work yet. They're ready, they're ready to do it, but we'll see what happens.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at this time? Any staff members? All right. Well, then, then I guess we'll open it back up to discussion. If anybody, if any board members have anything else that they'd like to add, any clarifying questions that they'd like, and then we can get down to business and we can sort out the motions that we were talking about earlier. So are any last things you guys would like to say? It doesn't need to be last either. Mike?
I'd like to mention that, yeah, I've been watching this. Little Fork is ready to go.
I can't hear you.
See, if your, if your green light's on, then get on top of it. One sec.
I've been watching this pretty careful and I see that, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. That Little Fork has set, set the stone for what they're gonna do and so has Indus and St. Thomas, just like what was just mentioned. So I want to see the kids back in school. I think it's very important. I do understand that maybe as a board, we need to look at maybe a week or two of getting things polished, get ready, but I'd like to see the kids back in. And I know everybody's concerned about the safety and I'm sure Little Fork is too, I'm sure Indus is, St. Thomas, the whole bit. So I myself could live with polishing time, a week or two, whatever it takes, get the kids back in school and get them going. Can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Terry. Thanks, Mike.
Yep. I think you can hear me. I agree a lot with what Mike has said. I, I don't know if I agree with Little Fork and Indus going back full-time or St. Thomas, but you know what? That's their choice and hope it works out for them. We have to get our kids back to school. I mean, that's, it'd be nice to, if every, every kid would be able to be on a computer at home and, and learn what they need to learn, but in reality, that can't happen. What my concern is, is that what I've heard from teachers, both verbally and in writing, is that they're concerned about starting too quick. They need time to prepare. They need to make sure they're ready. I don't know if us as board members can make a technical exactly what they're gonna do to make ready. I think that's administration and teachers that are gonna have to make that decision and us make a general startup, whether it's a week of, of learning or whatever you want to call it, or four days. You know, we can make that general statement, but I don't think us as a board can micromanage every possible situation for the next 12 months for the school. That's why we hire administration. That's why we hire teachers. We've got a lot of information. We need to start school and I think the, what the majority of people are saying is we need time, time to get ready and make it right.
Thank you, Terry. Yeah. So when I, when we started this, I thought that a nice compromise would be that late start or something, but from what I'm hearing from staff and stuff is that maybe I was off base on that and we need something a little bit more intentional. But I mean, that just goes to show you why we need their input and not go by just what the board has to say, because they're, they're the experts. We just paid $2 to get on a ballot at some point. And so I'd be interested in hearing more about what that, what, what a slow start would look like if you did it the opposite, where you, where you're doing what you were talking about, where the slow start included having kids in here from Missy, you know, where you eased them into it, where I was thinking where you would start with no kids and then ease kids into it. So I don't know how that would be different, how we would best utilize that a week or two that Mike was talking about, opposed to just not having kids in here.
Ted, do you want, and I don't know, I can't see Missy. I, I think there's two separate things. There's additional planning time, which I think is one thing that either I said I'm not against, you know, whether day, two days, whether it's the whole four days of the first week, additional planning time is one piece of it. The slow start is how do we bring the kids back? Meaning?
Yeah.
If you were, let's say, a hybrid model of some sort, are we gonna bring like Jen had proposed, half of the half, so to speak, in for, you know, the first week? Or are you gonna do that for two weeks? Or, you know, that's, there, there's two different pieces there. I think, and I'm just throwing an idea out, one is to decide what model we're gonna choose, you know, and come to an agreement and then figure out if we need additional time or not need additional time, you know, it can be part of, but they're, to me, separate pieces.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. So I guess if we were gonna do that out of fairness now, that if Tony, Jen or Rox, I mean, anybody's open to it, but these were the three people who were interested in having a different amendment to the motion. If you guys were interested in doing that, it'd be an opportunity now so we can talk about your guys' options. If you want to ask more questions from the principals or teachers, that's fine too, but we're gonna have to proceed some way. So if you guys have more questions, ask them and if not, we can figure out what your amendment's gonna be.
Ted, you have? This is Rox and I'm, I'm, I can tell that I'm not going to get enough people going with full distance learning unless Tony, you wanna present a resolution. I, as much as I think that's what we should do, we have to, we have to proceed ahead. So I'm not going to say anymore about resolutions.
Okay. Well, thank you, Rox. You do have that opportunity though. So feel, don't feel like, like if that's what you want deep down inside, like I want you to rest easy tonight. So.
Yep, I know. Yep.
Ted, you have an opinion after, I mean, I know you're, you're a smart guy.
Thanks. I hope the newspapers still on.
And, you know, I think, I don't want somebody to come up with a motion and then try to pass it and it's not a good motion. Do you have something that you could?
I really, what I would suggest is different than when I came in with, cause, cause it seems like that the staff so far and wants to come back or do distance learning. Like there's not much in between. I know that they don't want to do distance learning and monitor a bunch of kids at the same time. It seems to be one thing that everybody agrees upon. But I, I, I don't have, I don't have the right answer either, I guess. If I had to choose right now, it would be to ease into whatever, whatever our admin thinks easing into would be, whether it'd take two weeks or so and get, and ease into the whole plan. I'm okay with there being some of those days, you know, I realize it's like Labor Day or on Monday. So, or Memorial Day, Labor Day. So the Labor Days on that Monday. So it's four extra days that we would burn through of those days. I'm, I'm open to that too. But yeah, I thought that, I thought I was gonna come up with this great compromise before we started up, starting off slow for a month, but that didn't seem to be the compromise we were looking for. So maybe what's proposed, just with some flexibility for the teachers to, to ease into it, whatever that means.
Ted?
Yep, go ahead, Michelle.
I would like to modify my amendment to go with the plan as presented with the, I'm gonna say additional three days in the beginning.
Okay.
So then they have one day where they come in and then see how it works. You're back the next week.
Tony, or Michelle?
Yep.
And I'm just, I just want to throw one thing out for consideration is if, if we took what we did, I'm, I'm just thinking on the spur of the moment, so to speak, is you have two groups in the high school. So I don't know if it would be possible if we were gonna start up, you know, to try Thursday, Friday, you know, each group. If you want to look splitting, and I'm just going to what Jen was talking about, smaller groups, that's a totally different conversation then, because they would take going into the next week and it surely can't, you know, and the same at the elementary. If you wanted, I'm not completely against, you know, splitting the groups in half or, you know, the first day they come to school or something. You see what I'm getting at? I don't want to say the.
Right. Right. So, so would it be possible then say maybe, maybe give them like Tuesday, Wednesday, so then cut that back to two days, additional two days in that first week and then maybe have like group A on one day and group B on the next day? Would that work or not? Just for, just for that first week?
Anything possible. I just want to bring it, bring it up.
Yeah, that's a good point. I didn't think about that. So.
Yeah. Okay. So it's the same motion, but with two days?
Two, I think sounds like two days would be good. And then so it would be with, with having group A on Thursday and group B on Friday at the high school and the elementary school proceed as presented with everyone there as presented.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to add to that or talk about it?
I'd feel better if we added a couple more days to that, just because of the concerns I've heard. I think we've all heard from the teachers. I'd rather start after a week, say, you know what, we didn't need that extra day or two. I'd rather them say that than be in chaos. I shouldn't say chaos, but just not where we need to be after two days.
Well, I, I, I agree with that, Terry, but I mean, we kind of have to look a little bit forward too because of all these unknowns that we're heading into. If we burn through all those days right away, then we don't have any. You know, if we get to a point where say, all right, hold up, we need to take a day or two off here and we've used all of them, then what?
Is that an issue?
We might probably just start out with distance learning and let them get situated where they're comfortable and polished and then slowly ease back into a model.
I'm not modifying my motion to that.
Okay. Well, Michelle's motion is standing as she presented it. Jen, you, you were in the chat, had said you had some comments.
I had a couple of questions. I'm thinking about safety. So Kevin, let's, let's thinking about Chris's comment about aerosolized particles. I've heard that too. If, is, is how often will Taylor, the person that is helping with safety plan, if that becomes more solid evidence or something that they fail is best practice? I'm assuming, I've talked to Tom about how the air exchange will work. I've talked about filters and, and additional exchange outside. I never thought of the concept of not having the air moving around and I'm just saying, is there, do, how often will we meet with, or how often will you meet with Taylor and know what changes need to happen as evidence comes out? Is my first question.
I guess first of all, we've not set, you know, a certain day, you know, the recommendation right now, and, and I don't know if Tom's there and wants to speak or not, but is to have a certain amount of air circulation and that's in the plan, certain type of filters, you know, in, they were changing filters the other day. We're going on what is being recommended right now. Could our circulation system be shut down? I think the answer is yes. You know, I mean, I think if, if they didn't want the air exchange running, you know, if that came up as, you know what, hang on, things change. And we've talked about things are changing daily in guidance, you know, we talked about it last spring. If the guidance changes, we're gonna have to look at, you know, can we, you know, keep up with the guidance? I, I think in that case we could. You see it, I'm getting at, you know, right now it's, I think exchanging as much air as possible or at least up, you know, a certain level. And, and we're there, because I had made the comment last week, I think the high school system is, you know, fairly new in terms of, you know, five years or whatever. The elementary is gonna have a brand new system, you know, so that was a good piece based on current data, because they were recommending a certain amount of air movement. So again, IEA works with us all year. If, if there's changes, we're gonna be aware of it, is the best I can tell you, Jen.
Kevin?
Yep.
I guess what, what, one additional question would be there, isn't the makeup air pulled from the outside? So any air going in the classroom is gonna be fresh air?
Correct. It's, it's circulating, pulling in fresh air at some cubic feet per minute. It's not my area of expertise, but you know what I'm saying? They have a certain.
So, so we're not, we're not, we're not taking air from the classrooms and redistributing it. We're always pulling in fresh air. It's being filtered and it's being sent into the classrooms.
Correct.
But it's still moving around and if there have been, there have been, you know, some cases where you could get it from, you can, if it's aerosolized, there are different people, let alone, you maybe wouldn't get from person in the next room, but from a different floor because of air change. And I, I'm not saying I, I'm just saying I wanted to know about how we would know about those changes. And you answered that. Thank you, Kevin. Other is, from what I'm understanding, literature wise, that universal masking is really important and masking is very controversial. I know there's some families that have said their children may or may not be able to wear masks. I know that you've said before that there's some documentation of that, that in my opinion, that changes the safety for, for people in the group. And probably will we be following that? Can you give a little bit of take on that? There are times that some rules, when they, you know, a lot of the rules that have happened in school, they're about fairness and about, about compliance and about being flexible with kids that have these.
Jen, you're breaking up.
Okay. I'm sorry. My, my computer, the phone is, can you just, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I, I think I can comment, you know, without saying, we, we, the executive order requires, you know, the mask policy that they put in place. And, and so the best I can say right now is we need, whether it's staff or students, we need to comply to the best of that ability. And all I can do is use myself as an example. If I come into school and I'm just gonna say blatantly refuse to wear a mask, if I can't give documentation of why that is, I'm gonna be asked to leave, you know, and I, we, we can provide students with an education still. It's called distance learning. So I mean, that, that's being very harsh, if you might say it. Now, again, there are some legal reasons and if they have those, we're gonna have to honor that, you know? Can we still possibly build on, you know, you and I talked a little bit yesterday, so the whole group might not know, yeah, we can encourage, you know, just like. can encourage, you know, just like we do with other things, setting goals, trying to get them to comply at a certain time if possible. We can do face shields if, you know, that's an option. Any barriers we can put in place are going to be better than no barriers, you know. But like I say, if a person has a documentable reason, you know, a medical reason or something else that qualifies, as a free, public, appropriate education, you cannot deny that. I mean, that's, you know, the reality right now. But if they don't have a reason, we have other options, and it's called distance lurking, and that will have to be their option.
Kevin?
So is that zero tolerance?
Hold on one sec, Rox. You're up after Terry here.
Okay.
Kevin, if somebody does can't wear a mask for whatever medical reason, does a school have the option to make them distance learn because of that?
And I'm going, I could get a legal opinion for sure, but my understanding is, I believe we have to accommodate, meaning in school, I guess I could ask the attorney that question. You know, again, if someone refuses that and doesn't have a medical excuse, we do, I know, have a right to say, okay, your learning option is distance learning, and we'll accommodate your just, your whatever, failure to follow, you know, a direction given because it's an executive order. But if they have, you know, a medical reason, I don't think we can deny them the opportunity to come for their distance learning or their in-person days. I can ask that question, though.
I would, yeah.
Yeah, well, at least have to know the answer, because it's definitely going to happen. Thanks, Terry. So-
Rox had something, I think.
Rox, did you have something?
Yeah, I guess I would just like to have that answer clarified and told to all staff, because, you know, I hate to see the, where we say we do the best we can, and then that's very blurry in terms of what to report. You know, I have the number, and I report people for not wearing masks all the time, because it's an executive order and businesses. And so if staff comes to you and we don't really have the answer, you don't have the answer, and we say, well, I'm not sure, or give me some time, then we can't act on it right away. I just think we need to have all the answers, or as many answers as we can, so that we can know what we're going to do right away the first time there's noncompliance.
Everyone, you have a second thought.
All right, Terry's back up.
Okay. I'd like to get back to the number of days off before, well, days before we open.
I have some thoughts about that, too, Terry.
What's that?
I have some thoughts I want to share about that, too, when you get, when you're done.
Do we have, maybe I should know this, but, you know, when we made a calendar last year, we had a lot of these days off, like, my favorite and my dear hunting, and some others. Is that still there? Are those days still planned? And if they are, why don't we use some of those days to add on?
Okay, keep in mind, though, Terry, those two days, those two days are exchange days. So they have to be, now, like, the October 5th is a true-in service. That day, you could play with, if you will. But like, the deer hunting, I'm just going to call it the deer hunting day, and I don't have the calendar in front of me. I think we put a day in March or somewhere. Those are teacher exchange days, or, so we, those two have to be somewhere.
Yeah, I forgot about, yeah.
Okay. So, Jen, I got a question for you, because I think that Michelle's proposal is not necessarily what you were looking at, but the proposal that I'm about to make is going to be pretty similar to Michelle's, and maybe not as similar to your guys'. So I'd like to give you an opportunity to put forth anything that you're going to try to push before we move on and vote on Michelle's. So if you wanted to make an amendment or something, that would be the time. That goes for any member. I can't hear you, Jen.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you presenting something?
No, I'm asking you if you want to present a motion or an amendment to what's already on the table. That way, we can start moving forward.
Well, don't we have to move forward on my amendment first?
Not if she makes one off of it. And I, so I get what you're saying, Michelle, and yours will have a chance to be voted on. But from the beginning, I said that I would have to delay what they were saying and to give them an opportunity later on. And so if she, if she's interested in amending the one that you proposed, we still have one more amendment due to that one. Just trying to be fair to everybody. We'll definitely vote on yours, too.
Yeah, I wasn't, I was under the understanding that I could make an amendment now in-
You can wait till Michelle's gets voted down, too. That's fine. Or maybe it doesn't. I don't know. I shouldn't speak like that, but that's, all right.
Comment before we vote, though.
Sure.
Real quick, just somebody put in the chat about younger preschool needing to see teachers' faces. It should be clarified that children five and under are not asked to wear a mask or not mandated to wear a mask, so they would be able to see teachers' faces at those young ages. I just wanted to clarify that for the person that commented. But I can't, I'm just going to say, personally, I can't support going first day, the number of people we have in the building. I just can't. And so I know I can't, I can either support less or I could support distance learning in a slow rollout. But, and I don't feel like we're micromanaging. I've heard from several staff who have told me that they are fearful. I've heard, I have asked several staff about a slower roll, meaning less kids at a time to start off. And many of them, or let's say, a handful of them that I've talked to and brought that up, have felt like that seems way more bearable. And I know it's complicated and it's inconvenient for them, but I feel like it provides a safer product or a better product for education, even though it's a lot of work at first. And hopefully, we can be school longer and safer. And so, again, I think it's a full team effort, and there's so many ideas on the table. I'm really impressed with our staff, and I believe there are some that are ready for people to be in the room, in the classroom. But I don't think research or what we know is really, that's just too risky of an experiment for me. I know our staff will do the very best they can with what we give them, but I would like to give them better chance for success.
Thanks, Jen. So with that being said, then, I would like to make an amendment to Michelle's, then, to include four days of the, those flexible days for that first week. But then, I would like to allow for the next two weeks to be directed by the building admin, so the principals for their each building, because it really sounds like high school. And elementary school are going to be, I shouldn't say completely different, but they pretty much are, it seems like. So I would leave it up to the principals on how they feel that they need to roll out for those two weeks. If that's a quarter or half of the students, that's, that's my proposal. Everything else can kind of stand the way it is. I think there's a lot of details that need to be worked out, but the gist of it would be that. So that's my motion, our amendment that I would make to Michelle's two-day amendment.
So it'll be just the four days, and then everything else would be at the discretion of administration as to whether they-
And then on that last, when those two weeks are up, then it would be option, the option as presented.
But if they choose to roll out full, as was presented in the option in the packet, then that's their choice?
Yes, correct.
I would, I would agree to that.
So what would happen in the next two weeks?
Well, that would be up to Tim and Missy's team on how they want to roll it out. They might want to, Tim sounded like he could roll out faster, you know. I know that the, whatever it is during that two weeks, we should plan on there being instruction, and it can be instruction on distance learning and stuff like that. But that's my proposal.
I guess I'm asking, and again, I'm going to throw up to, like I say, I understand that is flexible, you know, meaning more planning time. So that's that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of that first. I understand that piece, and our administration and PDT would, you know, determine what needs to be done in that time. Obviously, a good chunk of that time would be planning time for teachers, but it's, you know, just like, we have to educate them on all the protocol that are going to be in place. That's part of our planning, instruction on, you know, video and instruction on the microphone, you know, all that stuff. That's, it could be planned over those seven days, then, I'm going to say, because we have three in-service days now. When it comes back to the next two weeks, I'm a little, I guess, I'm asking, is that an administrative, then, to sit down and figure out what we feel is best? Or is it, I mean, when you say-
Yeah, that's what, that's what I mean. I would like the, I would like-
I feel that that's how everybody's coming down, and that's what they've brought. I guess, if anything, I would like to modify it to at least have those numbers and flow out that first two weeks, to start that way and see how that goes.
I'm with you. And the idea of having the administration and their personal development teams do it is that they know better than we do. It's my thing, like-
Right, but it's going to be on us when this case turns into positive and-
Different than what my preconceived notions were of what we were going into. Go ahead, Tony.
I said it's going to be on us, though, when we start having positive cases and there could be a possible death. And I don't want to see that. I would like to see as slow start out as possible, so we don't have those numbers going like that.
Well, I'll respect your no vote.
Okay, and this is Rox. Also, if administration makes a decision as to what should be rolled out in two weeks, is that what I understand you to say, Ted, that whatever they wanted to roll out in two weeks, the administration could decide? Is that what you're saying, Ted?
Okay. I don't know that I can do that right now, Mike. I don't know.
Yes, that's what he's saying. The administration, it would be up to the administration to pick what is best for them and their situation.
Well, and again, just, just so the whole group is on board, the, once we determine a, what we call a starting model, from that point forward, you know, technically, if you look at the MSBA resolution, it does give administration the authority, you know. And I'm just going to say, if numbers, just say, went horrible, you know, in the next week, well, just say we're in session today, you know, and numbers start going south and this and that, that resolution gives us, and again, I'm going to be honest, I'm going to be in contact with the board, but it gives administration the right to change the model, okay? If we feel we need to go to distance learning, you know, we can pull the pin, so to speak, and do that. And I think the reason they're doing it is there needs to be some flexibility, if you will. The same goes, if things go great, just say everything goes great for the next five months, we'll be talking every month, obviously, as board meetings. If you chose, choose you want to meet more often, we're all going to be in conversation. But that resolution, which we put in, gives us the power, if, you know, if things go, I'm going to say bad, because that's the way I'm looking at, you know, if that is, something starts happening, we have a break in the community, whatever, it gives us the right to say, you know what, we need to change, and we need to change right now. You see what I'm saying? So we want, we want guidance, you know, laid out right now, how are we going to start? And then we will, you know, how do you say it? Evaluate, I'm not going to say daily, but watch how things are going. And if things need to change for whatever reason, we're going to have conversation, keep you all in the discussion. But it doesn't necessarily mean every one, every time there's a possibility of changing, we have to have an emergency board meeting. And you see what I'm getting at? I just want to be-
Right, but this is Rox again. But the only thing, and I, I don't mean to be with all, I want to say this with all due respect, with administration making the decision, I have to say, I could hear a lot of people saying, but administration aren't the ones in front of those kids a lot and having as much risk. You know, even secretarial staff, et cetera, they've got the Plexiglas and stuff, but, you know, there's, there's something to be said for the fact that the people who are in front of the kids should have a big say in that, too, not just administrators who are at a somewhat less risk. And I know that, I mean that with all due respect.
Well, opposed to us that aren't in it at all, right? Like, we're making those decisions right now. I mean, not to say, like, I trust Missy and Tim to use their staff appropriately.
Let me get a second.
I would agree with that. I feel the principals have the best handle on how to proceed.
Terry, go ahead.
I think those two weeks, I think after this lengthy discussion and what we've read, I think during those two weeks, I think that'd be an opportunity to, after the first three or four days of just the teachers and admin together, give them an opportunity to maybe change the schedule for two weeks, such as some of the discussion. Well, let's just have the kids now, whatever, there's two different sets of groups of kids, but maybe instead of twice a week for the next two weeks, let's do it one, once a week for each of those groups, so they can ease into it. I mean, something like that. Just give them an opportunity to make a different decision without having to come back to board or-
Well, I think that's for saying it is up to them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And I think admin, I think admin will listen to the teachers for those two weeks. I mean, I-
But I guess we're-
So can I, I got to do a little board chair little work here. So every comment that we have on there, we're not going to be able to respond to, especially if it's about specific stuff in the plan, like, I saw one on there about Plexiglas. We're not going to answer that tonight. There'll be a safety plan that follows with stuff like that. But I would like, Missy Tate just asked if she could talk, so we'll give her a second to chime in.
I just, with all due respect, and I appreciate the administrative flexibility, you know, we've kind of put out there what we think that we would like to propose and what we would do. But with all due respect, we need to give families a decision tonight. I don't think we can even wait till Tim and Kevin can come back and we can sit down and have some more discussion, or two weeks and say, families need to plan, they need to plan for daycare. Those are the calls that I'm getting right now, is what are you guys doing? Other people know. We need to know what you're doing. So with all due respect, I really hope we can have a decision, whatever that looks like. And I need to give teachers decisions, and I need to hire staff.
So I get what you're saying there, but the point would be, then, I guess, if you, we can make a decision, and you, Tim and Kevin can decide what you guys think is best for you right now, for your rollout. I don't really care about that. The issue is that, is that you're going to know how to use that two weeks better than we're going to know. So if timing's time, I got all night. I mean, if that's a concern, I'll go get a second.
Well, I think, what about if, so we're making a decision, right? But we're talking about the leeway of the administration and a little bit more of the backup information we have from Kevin about making changes on the fly. So I believe where we're giving them the additional days in the beginning, but we're going with the plan that was presented with those additional days, and then you have the flexibility to make changes within those first two weeks.
I agree with that, Michelle.
Yeah, I like that.
I just think if you decide tonight, like, if you talk to your teachers tonight and you decide that by tomorrow morning, what you want to do with those two weeks, then you have your answer by as early as you want to get it to those students for those two weeks.
But to clarify, we're going as the plan is presented, with the addition of, you know, that first four days off, but then we will, it will proceed as presented in the plan.
Well, mine was to give the two weeks to the administration. Tim, I'd love to hear-
Well, it is, but they, so right now, so what we're planning for is that would, what would be it started as. And then, within those, you know, additional four days, if they decide, you know, that, wow, that really isn't going to work after all, they would have the flexibility to change it, but as of now, would proceed with just the delay.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is accurate.
Well, that's a, that's a resolution that's going to be voted on right now, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Correct.
And I guess I'm in the same place as Missy, is that I think we have our information right now. We need to make it. I'm just throwing something out as far as-
Okay, well, if we decide, and then you guys are out, once we start, and then you're changing the plans after two weeks, I just don't want to have to say, I told you so, that's all, because we're giving you some flexibility here.
Well, I think the flexibility is, is that we won't have to, you won't have to come back to the board for a resolution. We'll start with a delay. We're proceeding as what is presented in the documents that we received in our board packet. That is the plan. But if you decide that you need to, you know, change on Tuesday, you won't have to come back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with that.
All right.
That's good.
Thanks for telling me what I think, Michelle. I appreciate- I appreciate it.
No problem, I'm there for you.
Kevin?
Yep, go ahead.
Are you wanting more specific direction? Like, we're kind of saying, go with what you're proposing, but modify if you see it's necessary for just the first two weeks. Is that what I'm hearing that we're voting on?
Well, no, the, the resolution, and, and that's what I try getting at, gives that flexibility. Whatever we choose tonight is our starting model. Then, as the year goes on, whether it's two weeks down the road, three weeks down the road, if there's a reason we need to change, that resolution gives us the authority. And again, I'm going to say, just like anything, myself, Tim, Missy, work for the board. You know, it's not something where just willy-nilly, we're going to go off and, you know, go this route. There's going to be open communication. This is the most, um, well, probably the strangest thing any of us have ever worked through. So again, MSBA, I think, I don't want to speak for them, wrote the memorandum because this is possibly such a fluid situation. You know, if it's, everything's going well, we can have all the conversation we want and plan when we want to go to the next step. You see what I'm getting at? That's fine. If things go south, whatever that means, that resolution also gives us the authority to say, kind of like a snow day, you've given me the, uh, authority to say, pull the pin if you need to. And again, I take that very, uh, seriously. So what I'm getting, and, and I think Tim and Missy will agree with me, is I would like it fairly clear of, here's what we're starting with, and what I'm getting at is, okay, we know we have four days extra, the first week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, for staff planning. An example would be, okay, week one now of school, let's go with the cutting them in half. So, you, you know, let's do a practice run, if you will, for the first week. So for the elementary, those kids would come two days. You see what I'm saying? Half the group would come two days, the other half would come two days, we'll take Wednesday off. At the high school, for the first week, we will do, um, half a Group A on Monday, half a Group A on Tuesday, and then half a Group B on Monday, or sorry, Thursday and Friday, the other zooming in when they're not in school. So that would be week one. And then week two, we're back to what we had proposed. If we find out week one goes horribly wrong, that resolution gives us the authority to say, hang on, we need more time of that. We got to do another week or two. Only letting it know though is, we want to be clear and communicate with parents the best we can ahead of time. You know, I, I've said numerous times, it's not to be where, you know, every day when you wake up at six o'clock, you're going, are my kids going or not? You know, we have no intention of doing that. We want to, you know, just say the first week, if Monday, Tuesday go pretty good, we're probably pretty confident that, you know, week two, we're going to go to the next step of going with our proposal. Monday and Tuesday didn't go that well, we might want to say, hey, just so you're aware, we're going to do this again week two, we need more practice. You know, like I said, give parents some forewarning on how we're moving, if you will. Do you see what I'm getting? To me, that's clear, I lay that plan out to parents going, you know, this is what week one looks like, this is what week two will look like, and week three, four, or five will continue as long as.
Great.
Things are going well.
I guess, I, I understand what you're saying, and I love what you just said because it's a slower rollout, and I would love to, that that happened, and I hope with discussions with your staff, maybe that will. Um, I guess, I understand that you have discretion to change as advised by Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Department of Ed and with what go from your staff. And I know parents want to know, but this, and I know I'm hearing from you too, this is not the year to make it super convenient. Parents need to know that things are going to be good and change, and always have to know what they're doing with the, you know, when things, things will. Um, in that slow roll is that some of the diseases and spreading may not show up until the next week. Just the, I, if you would consider a slower roll like that, I would possibly, because right now, I, I'd, if it means all the kids are going to be there day one, even if it's four days later, I can't support it. But I, the idea that you would consider a later, a slower roll with safety in mind, again, in my mind, it's safety first. Good education second, and, and then convenience for families and staff third. I, you know, so.
Thanks, Jen. Um, is that something you'd be interested in then, uh, to the admin, administration, Tim and Missy on doing a slow rollout for the first two weeks as part of this? Or do you want to start out as, just take those four days and then go full speed option C?
Well, I have a question then. So you're talking having a quarter of the kids each day. For Kevin, it said we would have a quarter of the kids each day the first week, and then Jen, are you saying a quarter of the kids the second week also? And then, as Michelle had said, after that first two weeks, then we go with that plan that we came forward with today?
That was the recommendation that I'm thinking, because I feel like it takes longer than that, than that second week, like, a little more time to know if there's things spreading around. You know, by the time, if I'm symptomatic on Thursday of the first week, and then you're thinking about exposure, I might get tested on Friday, I might find out by Tuesday, you know what I mean? Like, and now you know whether it's positive or negative, or if more people are symptomatic. If it's just a little bit more time, I think there's nothing lost but more time and patience in this first, but that's, again, that's just my opinion. I know it might be in the minority.
Missy had, uh, started to say something too there. Is your mic on over there?
Yeah. Well, what did Kevin, Kevin, did you suggest a week of doing half, and then if things went well the second week, we would roll out to what the proposals?
That was my recommendation was, you know, like, week one is, is splitting it, so it's a, I'm going to say a practice day or practice run for each group, so to speak. Um, and then, you know, week two would be, okay, we've all done it in a small group, you know, the elementary twice, so to speak. You know, you, you follow, Missy?
Yep. Yep, I could live with that. Uh, my only caveat would be, I think we'll have to talk about daycare, maybe not offering daycare until the second week because of space. Let me, let me.
And, and the, the other piece that I'm just throwing out, that, you know, um, it just throws a whole nother context that we're going to have to figure out is connectivity for the elementary students. You know, right now, we have a very small pot that we have to work on because it's those distance learners. You follow? If we're going to rely on everyone being out, we're going to have to, for the most part, double tone, if you will, on figuring out connectivity for, you know, if we extend the amount of distance learning time to, you know, a longer period, we're going to have to deal with that because right now, we have a smaller group to figure that out for. You follow? I mean, if we go two weeks, four weeks, we got to get going in a different direction, figuring out the connectivity for all the elementary men. And so, um, it's just something to think about, but.
Okay.
We will solve whatever issues we have to solve, and I'm just, you know, that's part of the.
Okay, well, Jen, go ahead.
This is something for administrative to decide, but because it's come up so many times, I just want to put that out there. If the high schoolers, as we get to the full model and everything, let's just say, everything's going really successful because everybody's doing their job and that's great, but if the high school, two days on Tuesday, you know, and has Wednesday off, that those faculty have time off to do their distance learning, is it just something to consider? It's not ours to decide, it's administrative, um, consideration to maybe consider a little bit of time at some point through that week for elementary staff to do a bit more of that distance learning, whether that's an early out, an hour early, more days of the week. I mean, that'd be just be kind of hard, but something to just think about. Because, Missy, tell me, how is there 77 minutes of prep time? Are they with students during that, or will they go someplace else? How are they going to get, what does that time look like for them?
Well, we will have a teacher room set up that has a smart board and a, um, camera set up in it so they can do some recording and working in there. We'll have a teacher space, so it's not perfect. There are some times when the, um, students in specialty will be going outside, like for music or FIAED when the weather permits. And then every day for recess, the kids will be out of the classroom. Lunch logistics, we're still working out, I'll have that worked out after the, um, pair bumping meeting and a decision is made here. So that could be another time too, that students would be out of their room, and that's a 25-minute period.
Okay, thanks.
All right, um, does anybody else that's a board member or staff member have anything that they'd like to add? We currently have the four-day, um, proposal with a slow rollout for week one slash option of extending it for week, week two, if the admin is, so desires. Um, is there anybody else who wants to talk to that anymore? All right, well, do we want to vote on it then?
Let's do it.
Yes.
All right, um, well, actually, we can't because I made a, a motion on it. I don't think we made a second, so.
A second.
Terry Murray.
Well, I modified my motion. I was accepting your suggestion.
Oh, so are we?
We're still, we're still in the same motion.
We're in this together, you and I?
I just, I just modified it to accept what you had, so we don't need to do that.
Okay, Michelle and Ted then. For a motion in a second. All right, any further discussion?
How do you feel about that flexibility, Kevin? That give you?
Can you ask that one more time, Jen?
Does that, Kevin, do you feel that gives you, Missy, Tim enough guidance?
I, I think it does. I mean, at least to me, it's clear. And, and, and again, as, you know, we're going to do Tuesday, and Tim and Missy can weigh in, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of the first week, we have four additional planning days, and we're all going into this knowing that if something happens and the state won't give us any additional days, and we run out of days financially, I'm just being honest.
Yep.
Okay, we're taking those four days, we're going to use them upfront for planning, making this the best we can. Week one then would be what I'm going to call the slow rollout of what we proposed, meaning, like I say, at the elementary, we would take the classes into, in essence, two groups, and we'll figure out how that works, whether half of them come Monday, Tuesday, or whether they do a Monday, Thursday, we can figure that out. The other half comes the second part of the week. At the high school, the two groups, in essence, they'd come one day for the first week, every student would come one day. Week two then, if, if that all went well, week two would be what we had originally proposed of elementary and high school. I'm fine with that. It's going to take some additional, you know, communicating and planning, but at least it gives a practice run. If things aren't going well that first week, we have the right to modify, you know, and hey, we need another week, we need another two weeks. That's the fluidity of the situation, I guess. So yes, I'm fine. Tim and Missy, if you want to weigh in?
Okay, I'm ready to, I'm ready to vote then.
Yeah, no, I mean, that sounds good. I'm glad you clarified, Kev, though, because I wasn't quite sure on what that second week of school would be. So the second week would be the plan that we put forward. The elementary would be there every day, and we would be coming two days. Each team would come two days.
At administrator's discretion, it sounds like, so it'll depend on what you guys think how that first week went.
Well, right, but I mean, unless, right, and if that first week goes as planned, then we would go into that second week. And if something changed in our community with the number of cases, of course, then that could change it too. But, right, it gives us a week to try it, and then the second week, we would roll in.
Okay. Um, and Missy, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Okay, she's shaking her head, no. Um, well, I guess that's, I guess that's it. If we're ready to vote, if no board members have any, uh, further discussion. Okay, well, we'll do a roll call vote then at this time. One second.
For final, will you just repeat exactly what we're voting on?
Sure, absolutely. So as I understand it, um, we are going to have, uh, the week after Labor Day, the four days will be, um, use up some of those flexible COVID days, um, for teacher preparation. And then the next week will be a slow rollout with the week following that at the, um, admin's discretion as well, if they needed another week for the rollout, but with only the slower rollout being in that first week is what the admin are, I think, saying. Um, and then everything else in regards to, um, staffing, I guess, would stand as it's written in the proposal. I mean, I guess we, that we can have additional staffing and stuff like that, but I mean, the class sizes and all that stuff, that would be in there. Yep, Missy?
Um, will there be a special board meeting on Monday, another one, just to approve the hire of our additional staff? Because we would want to get that taken care of right away if we could.
Okay, that's a good question. Kevin, what do you think?
Well, what I was going to say is, you, you know, the board understands here that option C, I'm going to call it for the most part, we're adding, I think it's three staff to the elementary.
Correct.
If posted, if, if we approve this plan, we're going to hire those people. I mean, if you want a special meeting, you can, but again, they can come in at any meeting possible, you know what I'm saying? Everyone's on the up and up that we're hiring staff.
Yeah, yeah.
To, to accommodate, like I say, I'm not against meeting, um, you know, a week from now, two weeks from now, whatever it may be, if you want another working session, an update on where we are, clarify, we can put certain things on there. But like I say, technically, we're going in, everyone knowing we're hiring an extra staff, as long as we're under that assumption, and we sign the paperwork with them, they're hired, um, sooner we get it done, the better, but, you know, you're giving us the go-ahead, so to speak.
And I think we had kind of pre-approved that already at a prior meeting, the additional staff.
Once, once the plan's approved, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, um, clarifying questions that are needed right now before we vote? Okay, here we go. Roll call, Mike Holden.
Yes.
Michelle Hebner.
Yes.
Tony Corpey.
No.
Jennifer Windows.
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray.
Yes.
Roxanne Skokstad-Dietrich.
No.
Uh, it passes five-two, um, and I truly appreciate all you guys' discussion and, um, thought that you put into this. Um, it passes five-two. Thank you. Um, moving on to the next agenda item will be. Um, set superintendent goals for 2020, 2021 school year. Um, what are we doing for that, Kevin?
Well, the, the.
I'll be honest with you, I haven't paid as much attention to that as some of the other agenda.
Make it through the year, Kev.
Well, well, honestly, and again, there's nothing set that, again, I think last year, it might have taken us, I don't know if it was into September or October, but point being is, if we're going to have some goals, we should get set. And, and again, I under, said that, um, when we were going over last year's, it is hard to focus on, you know, what realistically they should be, but I guess if we're going to set some, we need to, you know.
Are we, is anybody okay with, anybody not okay with tabling it until the next regular board meeting or the?
I, I motioned to table it.
I second that.
Okay, thanks. Um, I got a motion by Michelle and a second by Jen, I believe, to table it.
Yep.
Any further discussion? I mean, it's important he has them, I, we all understand that. It's just whether or not that was a priority over this last little bit for us.
I think we have better information to set those goals after we're closer to starting up and stuff.
Sounds, sounds good. So let's do a roll call vote to table the, um, uh, superintendent's goals right now. Uh, Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Skokstad-Dietrich?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously to table, uh, Kevin's goals. I think then that leaves us with administrative reports. Um, I don't know how that'll, that probably won't be how it normally is, so, uh, we'll start with Missy Tate, elements, elementary principal.
I didn't really, really repair or prepare anything. I was just hopeful a decision would be made tonight, and it was. would be made tonight, and it was. So, thank you for, um, making a decision, and thank you for, um, being respectful of us and hearing what we had to say, and our teachers, and, um, I appreciate your due diligence in looking at all options. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy. Um, Tim Everson, secondary principal?
And I don't have a report for you either. I apologize. We've been working on all these different plans and the, the planning, um, and I too...
What he was expecting when, it was just on the paper, so I had to say it.
Okay, I know. I, and I too appreciate the, the work that you've put into and the thought and the conversations you've had, and I am thankful that we do have a decision tonight so that we can move forward and our families can plan accordingly, and so, thank you.
Um, Kevin Grover, superintendent?
And for the most part, like I said last week and probably the last few weeks, I mean, ninety, uh, I don't know if I'd say ninety, eighty-five percent of our day and effort right now is, you know, what we're working on right here, which is not normal. I mean, yeah, we're keeping the other pieces going, you know, as far as budgeting, as far as levy, as far as, you know, you know, building projects, you, you know, it's, it's, it's all still there, but the reality is the majority of our time and effort, questions, communications, everything. And, and I'm, I'm gonna speak for Missy and Tim, as well, I said this last week, as well as the rest of the staff that has participated, that's where our energy is right now, and it should be. And so, no, I don't have a whole lot. I mean, there's other things going on. The building project, I'm gonna say, is moving along, meaning elementary, for the most part, as planned. Um, I'll be honest, it delayed a little bit because we thought they'd be out a week or so earlier with getting a shorter start or quicker start, but, um, that's construction, if you will. So, um, I think the decision tonight will, I'm not gonna say make it easy, but will alleviate a little bit of anxiety and stress, at least for the elementary staff, and, and again, can support that. Um, and again, in the end, the building, I think, is gonna be much better to support education, so, uh, it's a bump worth working through. So, no, I don't have a whole lot to add, and, and again, thank the board and thank staff. And again, as I've said in the past, and I said in the kinda letter that I, um, put out, that hindsight is not 2020 on this. You know, whatever happens, you know, it's very easy to point fingers, and I, I know the board will leave here in, how do you say it, holding hands in agreement. We didn't all agree, but that's fine. We support going forward. I mean, if things go right, we can't say it's all because of this great, there's just so many things, you know, so many balls. Things go poorly, it's not because of the board's decision, and they should have, you know, done X, Y, or Z. There's just too many variables. So, we leave here, you did your homework, um, we came to a decision, and we will implement it the best we can, and your staff will as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, community head advisory. Dan, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, yeah, not, not much either. I mean, there's plenty I could say, but, um, yeah, thanks to everybody that, uh, you know, weighed in on this decision. I guess the biggest, uh, thing that I would add, uh, to this conversation in terms of, um, upcoming next steps is the packets are gonna be going out to the families next week. Um, so some of this messaging and some of the, some of the decisions that have been made and letters from Kevin and, and the administrative team will be a part of that. So, um, it'll be in the hands of families, uh, in addition to what we post online. So, that's all I'll add.
Okay, um, thanks, Dan. Um, recreation commission, um, Terry or Mike, do you have anything for that?
Well, we got a meeting on Wednesday. Been pretty, uh, much status quo. Um, you know, a lot of the sports weren't going on to different programs, so it's been pretty quiet. Uh, City Beach was busy at times, uh, with the hot days. Part, that's part of the rec. Um, but overall, uh, we'll know more Wednesday when we're talking, but our finances are doing great, so...
Okay, thanks, Mike. Um, student council, Ella, do you have anything you'd like to add? Are you still on here? Ella, if you're saying something, I can't hear you, if you want to.
Sorry, forgot I had to unmute myself.
That's okay. Happens to the best of us.
Yeah, we don't really, um, right now, we're still in the planning phase of everything, and we're really waiting to see kind of what we're gonna decide to do for the year, but hopefully now we can get the ball rolling a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Ella.
Yeah.
All right, well, um, then I guess I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Got a motion by Terry, a second by Mike at seven thirty-six. Um, I'll stick around if anybody wants to talk, um, but I do gotta run for one second. And, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Mike Holden? Um, Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Skokstedeech?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.